I call the January 25th, 2022, 3:00 PM session of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda item, matters presented by the public that will be taken up later in today's meeting. Again, welcome everyone. Our first item of business is Agenda item number five, the items of consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion? We approve the items of consent?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number six is a matters presented by the public. We did have Mr. Doug Stigall of the Collinsville District requested time. I have a brief policy statement that is the board's policy. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in today's meeting. We're here to listen to you by coming to the podium. You've agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board and its members. Please state your name and the district in which you live. Mr. Stigall.
I appreciate you having time here. I'm Doug Stigall from Collinsville, Virginia. I'm here to talk about the reversion, what little I know about it. And y'all can tell me if I'm wrong on anything, but if a city of Martinsville wants to revert its charter, in my opinion, you know, they, from what I understand, they could do it. I know the term consolidation and reversion, is it the same? I don't think so. I think reversion means forced, and I don't like to be forced in anything. I don't want my taxes going up, but then again, I don't want the taxes of the city to go up either. Those, I don't want anybody's taxes to go up, but that's what it looks like. I listened to Thomas Slaughter. He had what he told here a few months ago. Do we want to keep fighting this? Or do we want to just let the reversion happen? I know now they want to pass a referendum. They've told me if I'm wrong, where people can vote on it in the city and to see if it remains a city or if it remain or if it can revert. Well, from what I understand, there's a shortage of money. That's what it's all about. They don't have the capital, life rate in Martinsville fully like they should. And what does that do? That affects the schools, the police departments. It affects everything. So if they vote to not revert, where is the money going? Where's the capital going to come from that's going to keep Martinsville operating? They, they're going to go up. They can't levy the taxes, but so much go up on the taxes because people, population's going down, and that means that people will be moving out when the taxes go up. I just, I don't know what the answer is, but I know that, I appreciate Bill Stanley and them trying to stop, I mean, trying to do something to help accounting, but if the money's not going to be there, it's just like the hospital in Stuart. They wanted to keep it open, but the money wasn't there. They never did. It's, it's, it's a money thing. And another thing I don't understand, they, they ratified it. Y'all ratified it, then changed their mind. And then this annex. I've asked a lot of people, nobody really understands with they can annex, what, up to 10 miles or something, the city? I don't, I don't know how far it is. They said now, they gave us 10 years, but do they annex just undeveloped property? Or what would it cost if they annexed something like Walmart or Lowe's or the Lester property? Can y'all answer that? It's, it's confusing to me. I know that if they just annex property to extend their boundaries, that's, from what I understand, is very, very expensive to annex. And I just wonder what it would cost to do that. I appreciate it.
Agenda item number seven. Mr. Grinstaff was not able to be here today, so we'll move on to Agenda item number eight, a presentation by the Blue Ridge Regional Library, and we have members of the library here. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Rick Ward. For those of you who don't know, I'm the director of the Blue Ridge Regional Library, and I thought I'd come by and give us an up, give you an update on what we're doing at the library system currently, because, you know, with the rough times we've had with the pandemic, we've had to close the doors for a while and go to strictly curbside. There was a period of time in 2020 where we actually didn't have people in the buildings because of the stay-at-home order, but fortunately, we were able to bring the staff back in June of 2020, and we were able to get back into doing curbside service. So I just wanted to point out today some of the things that we've done to compensate for what we've had to deal with. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Lando Gravely, who was going to come and speak to you today, but unfortunately, he wasn't able to make it. He had created these slides, so I wanted to give him credit for that. One of the things we wanted to do was make sure that we continued to be of service to our community. We were doing the curbside service for checkout of anything from books to movies to audiobooks, but we also did faxes. We did copies, various sundry things like that. And one of the things we decided to do was that back in 2020, we were able to get a grant from the Library of Virginia through the Institute of Museum and Library Services, and we decided to help the community out by giving out curbside PPE kits, because back then, things were hard to find, and so that was one of the things we wanted to do. They contained, each bag contained hand sanitizer, a face mask, and some antibacterial white wipes. We created 700 of them to give out to the system, and we've given practically every one of them away, and they've been well received. So that was one of the first things we decided to do, to help the community out. The next thing, we didn't want to leave the children out, so we decided to do, in the fall of that year, to do a Black Panther art contest, because then, at that time, the Black Panther movie had just come out. It was very popular. The kids were crazy about it, and we felt like it was something that we could key on and get some interest with. And to help us with that program, we partnered with Albert Harris and Axton Elementary, and also FC and Martinsville Middle Schools to get the word out about the art contest. And as you can see here, we had three different winners from preschool, school age, and teen. And I have to say, we have some fine and talented young artists in the area, so we wanted to make sure that we included the children. Along those lines, we also continue with our curbside pickup programs, but we decided we needed to do some type of programming. So what we decided on was to begin with, for Valentine's Day, and we've done this two years in a row, we decided to give out Valentine's Day surprise gift boxes to the kids up to, like, 12 years old, and they were very popular. People would just come by. It was a drive-through type event, or they would come in, come by and call us, and we would take it out to the cars. It was very well received. Then around Easter time, we decided that we were going to do an Easter basket giveaway. It was a huge success. The kids were really excited to be able to get these. If you notice, the one for the Collinsville branch, the small baby there, that was that child, the mother emailed us and said that was that child's very first Easter basket. So we were very tickled about that. All the branches participated in that. We had a lot of good success with that. Not wanting to leave the older kids out and the adults as well, we decided to do a Chasing Lucky the Leprechaun contest, and that was basically where you came and picked something up at the library, and you've got a card or an envelope with a chance to win. We had a lot of gift certificates from different area businesses that contributed to us, that were very kind to help us out. And then we also had a $20 gift certificate as the grand prize at each branch. So that, I think we gave out 345 envelopes, and one of the things that, comments that I heard was that a lady told us that it gave her and her kids something to do together. And I think everybody can agree that a chance to win something's always fun, and we were just trying to get people to come to the library, do the best we can for the community. I didn't mention that in the Easter basket giveaway, we wound up giving away 358 Easter baskets system-wide, so that was something that was very popular as well. Then moving into the summer, we, this is this past summer, we decided to try and do as much stuff as we could outside because of the continuing ongoing pandemic, but things seemed to be lightening up a little bit, so we felt like we could go ahead and do the summer reading program, and this was the kickoff. The theme for the program was Tales and Tails, as you can see, and these were the bags that we give away as the preregistration to get people, the kids, to come in and register and be part of the program. One of the things we decided to do, because the year before, obviously, was the numbers were low because of the way things were going, but we decided to give away an iPad as the grand prize for the teens and a Kindle for the school age children. Well, it worked, because we increased our numbers to a total of 379 children registered, which was double last year's. One of our main concentrations during the summer with the summer reading program is to prevent the summer slide, which, as most of you, many of you know, that's when the child is out of school. They stop reading, they stop studying, and then when they come back to school, they've lost a bit of it over the summer, and they have to get caught up. The summer slide helps keep that from happening by getting the reading during the summer continuously, right up to when school starts again. So we thought this was a big, big success. Also, in conjunction with that, we continued to do the summer feeding program. This is a program through the USDA and the Henry County Schools. The USDA provides the food. The Henry County Schools prepare the food, and we serve it. We've been doing it now, this would have been our ninth year, but we couldn't do it last year because of COVID, so this was our eighth year doing it. We were one of the first libraries in Virginia to actually start with this program when it first came out, and we felt like because of some of the food insecurities we have around here during the summertime when the kids weren't going to school, it was necessary to get nutrition to them. So we definitely wanted to provide that, and you'll notice in this slide, the Martinsville Library distributed 718 of the food packets, and there was 2,013 totals, so that means that three Henry County branches gave out 1,295 meals that were served to the children of this area. And then we were happy at that particular time in June of this past year, we were able to reopen the libraries on their normal schedule again. We were, we did a lot of things to prepare for it. We had free masks for the patrons. We had hand sanitizer stations installed. We had Plexiglas put up at all the circulation desks, and we had, you know, markings on the floor, hoping people would keep their distance. So we were fortunate to be able to do that. We're still open to this day, even though our positivity rate is horrible for this area, but that's because of Omicron, obviously. Also, moving right along, in the fall, we decided to do a trunk-or-treat, which, this one's from last year. We did it last year, this past year, and the year before, and the three branches that participated were Bassett, Collinsville, and Martinsville. What we did was we decided to have a contest, and you needed to go to each of the three locations and get your ticket stamped, and then we put all the tickets into a hat and drew out a winner. Who won a golden ticket, which was a Walmart gift card of $50. The trunk-or-treat, the first year, we had people lined up out of the parking lots. It was so, so popular, and this past year, it was very popular as well. So we were glad we were able to be able to do that. The kids were ecstatic. It gave them somewhere to go that was safe and didn't have to worry about the virus and things like that. The thing I guess we're most proud of right now is at Christmas time, we gave out a total of 600 holiday cheer food totes. What we decided was, once again, there was food insecurities in the area, and we so, through the generous donations and partnerships with area businesses, we were able to put together a bag full of, it's, you can see in the picture there, it's macaroni and cheese, peanut butter, there's some rice, there's some beans, there's some tuna fish, there's some fruit cocktail. This year, we did stew and yams and rice and beans again, and I think a whole packet of cookies. So anyway, that was one of the things that we really were proud of being able to do. We also did food for fines, which if you owe the fine, you could bring in a can of food or nonperishable food. We took a dollar off of your fines for each item you brought in, up to five items. A lot of people who didn't have fines came in and donated food anyway, so we were very, very happy about that. I don't have the numbers of how many we were, we gave it all to the Salvation Army here, excuse me, and in Patrick County, we gave it to the Patrick County Food Bank. So we just felt like this was something we wanted to help our community with, and we wanted to keep it going. National Library Week was in April of this past year, and we thought, well, we're going to reward our patrons with just a small token of our appreciation. So we gave out small bags with an eight-ounce bottle of water, some chocolate chip cookies, and also a menu of all the different programs and services that we have, that we offer at the library. One of the things we tried to do was offer more online services because of the pandemic. You can now get a card online. You don't have to come into the library and, also, we have Overdrive, which is our eBooks. We have Hoopla, which is movies and TV shows and music and things like that. So that's one of the things that we wanted to do for our community. We were recognized by the Tourism Committee with this certificate of congratulations, so we were very happy to get that. I just wanted to mention that in passing. And then one of the things we got coming soon through a grant that we received from the Ann and Jack Zachary Memorial Fund, we're going, we've already purchased some Quest II Oculus VR goggles, and it's one of the things that we want to get started once we can open back up and have more people in the library system. But one of the things that I was, excuse me, drawn by Ann Frank House, I talked to a librarian in Rossville, they have them, and they said they have this program. You actually go into Ann Frank's house and walk around in the house to see how small it really was. So it's an educational type of thing that kids would be able to come over and use. We're still in the process of getting everything set up, and hopefully, we'll come out with that soon. Also, there's a lot of other educational materials that we offer, plus games as well, with the Epic Roller Coaster. I tried that in Rossville, and I was pretty dizzy by the time I got through doing that. That's, you want to be sitting down when you do this type of stuff. But anyway, we wanted to give this to you and give you a report. I just wanted to mention that our staff has worked really hard this year. We've not really had any type of cost of living adjustment from the localities and the tenures that I've been the director of this library system, so we will be asking to give our hard-working staff, we'll be asking for an increase so that we can give our staff a 5% raise, as I think Henry County was able to do for their staff this year, because not only do we not want to lose people, because we do have to compete with other people to keep our staff here too, but inflation is running between 6% and 8%, and it's just getting really tough on people out there. So, but we wanted to give you a heads up as to what we're doing. We're going to continue doing it, and we're going to do the best we can to help our community out. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jim, can I say one little thing? That guy, Bert, sir. No, sir. We're in the middle of an agenda right now. Agenda item number nine, we have a monthly update for the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation. We have with us Mark Key. Mark, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Members of the board, it's our pleasure to bring you an update combining December and January into one. Our Small Business Saturday, the annual event, was held on November 27th. We had a record number of folks this year. This is a program where EDC provides a $10 gift certificate for folks to go into restaurants in Martin Luther County. We had, we gave out 532 vouchers. 80% of 427 were used, and the participants spent an average of $7.68 more in each of the restaurants they went to. So this is designed to get our local folks into restaurants and places to eat that they may not have otherwise gone to or had a chance to go to, and it's been very, very successful, and our local businesses appreciate this quite a bit. There'll be a franchising 101 workshop coming up on January 27th, on Thursday this week, where our staff will help people that are looking for basic information about franchises and how to go about that. Valerie's also, Valerie Harper in this division has helped three folks, or two folks rather, with Harvest Grant Assistance that continues, and has met with Lucy's Simply Southern Restaurant, which is open at Forest Hill Country Club, and is doing very well after a couple of years there. We created, Spencer Johnson, his division has created a monthly report on unemployment. I would call your attention, that is in your materials. You'll see that it continues to go downward. We're down to 3.3%, and I would call your attention to the November 21 numbers, 23,809 folks in Henry County that are employed. That is the highest number of folks employed since June 2008. So very good news for folks here in job opportunities. In the last couple of months, our staff has assisted Crown at the CCAT facility with their first job fair. These were held on December 16th and 18th, and to date, they've already hired approximately 40 people that are starting through a training program. They'll train locally at CCAT on site, and then they're going to go rotate out to a Crown facility. Initially, they were going to go to Tennessee, but that facility was damaged pretty heavily with the tornadoes that came through, so they may go there, but some may go to Texas. So they're going to be in a cycle for the next few months of continuing to hire people, train locally, and then have them go out on site, so that when they open up next year, they'll be ready to roll. It's interesting that they're not waiting to hire, they're looking for folks now. And there'll be another job fair on February 17th and 19th. That's a Thursday and Saturday, so we'll go through the advertising again, people have another opportunity to go and apply. We've received good news, the VBRS V Grants, a grant through the Virginia Department of Economic Development. We're receiving almost $1.1 million to help us to continue with the development at Track One at the Commonwealth Crossing. This money will be to clear cut the balance of the site and do engineering work. We participated in a beta test, marketing event, or marketing project for Lot One at Commonwealth Crossing. This was sponsored by DeeDee Caldwell. She is a prominent site consultant. We worked with a member of the Site Selectors Guild, and the good news about this is our site will be used and presented in a presentation to the Site Selectors Guild Board, which will be great exposure for our site, and we're excited about DeeDee requesting our participation in that. In our Tourism Division, you can see the numbers in November, we had 19 guests in the visitor center. We had eight in December. There are a number of webinars that are, and social media events. I'll not talk about all those, but that's the primary way that our folks are getting information on tourists and visitor events out in this, in the world that we live in now. We've, Smith River Fest for 2022 will be August 20th. We're already planning for that, and we filed a request with SOBA Health for the title sponsorship. The Dick and Willie Trail had 2,741 and almost 3,000 people respected in November and December on the trails. It continues to be a great resource for us. We continue in social media. We have Foodie Wednesdays, talking about restaurants in town. We have the 25 Days of Christmas, where there's a special event, media event each day. We're kicking off Black History Month campaign in March, I'm sorry, in February. It'll be modeled after our 25 Days of Christmas, will highlight a different business each day of the month, and there'll be featured, there'll be 28 businesses featured, obviously, with 28 days in February. Under Workforce Development, there's a lot of cross work going on with different divisions, but particularly, our 2022 Resource Relocation Guide is in the final stages of reprinting. That's a guide that we use locally and with Prospect, but it also goes in all the visitor centers around the state. And we have finalized our 22 Nonprofit Resource Guide. It's a great guide. Dale has put it up on social media platforms for the county, and it's just a one-stop-shop for folks to go to to find out where they need to go for all types of services. Our internship program was on hold last year because of COVID. It will reengage this year. We have commitments from Bassett, from Eastman Hooker, and Press Glass for the interns that will be here. And again, these are internships for folks from outside of Martinsville Henry County, and they have to be tied to a specific job opening at these companies. We're not, these are not interns to just do busy work during summer. These are interns that are looking for real jobs when they, when they graduate, and the intern that they're in, or the internship that they're in, has a job need at the end of it, so we're very hopeful about that. You can see, also in this division, Sarah Hyde just did a lot of this work, as well as Beth Marshall. You can see different places we advertise for the Crown hiring events, and we'll do that again this next month in February. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Agenda item number 10, 10A, an additional appropriation referencing coronavirus relief funds for the school board. Mr. Hall.
The school board requests that the board supervisors approve appropriations totaling $350,381 received from the following coronavirus relief funds. $42,451 from the American Rescue Plan Pundless Funds. $13,682 for the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Funds. And $294,248 from the United States Department of Agriculture. And Dr. Boone is here, should you have any questions about this request.
All right. The board has had an opportunity to review this and the accompanying paperwork. What is the desire of the board in regard to this additional appropriations?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve the additional appropriation of $350,381 to the school budget for the purpose indicated.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10B, an additional appropriation referencing grant for record preservation for the clerk of court. Mr. Hall.
Jennifer Ashworth, our clerk of court, is asking the board to appropriate $45,176 received as a grant from the Library of Virginia. Those will be used for preserving records in the circuit court.
With that, what is the pleasure of the board?
With that, what is the pleasure of the board in regard to this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the additional appropriation of $45,176.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. 10C, an additional appropriation referencing grant funds for Riverview Park. Mr. Hall.
Staff is asking the board to appropriate $45,000 received as a grant from the Martin's Henry County Economic Development Corporation. These funds will be used for initial engineering and surveying of Riverview Park.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the board in regard to approving this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation of approval of additional appropriations, $45,000 for the Riverview Park.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. 10D, an additional appropriation referencing grant funds for the Philpott Lake and Marina. Mr. Hall.
Staff is asking the board to appropriate $30,000 received as a grant from the Martin's Henry County Economic Development Corporation. These funds will be used for a new entrance sign for Philpott Lake and Marina.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the additional appropriation of $30,000 for the new sign at Philpott Lake and Marina.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. 10E, an additional appropriation referencing asset forfeiture funds for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to appropriate $52,550 received from state and federal asset forfeiture funds. Sheriff Perry has indicated that the funds will be used to buy uniforms for new and existing officers.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the board's desire?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the additional appropriation of $52,550 from the asset forfeiture funds for uniforms.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. 10F, an award of contract referencing patrol vehicles for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to award a contract in the amount of $178,088.50 to Sheehy Ford located in Richmond for the purchase of five Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles. These are priced at $35,617 apiece. Pricing is based on a vehicle procurement program of the Virginia Sheriff's Association and has been approved by the county's purchasing department. Funding for this purchase is included in the current year budget.
In regarding the award of contract for patrol vehicles, what is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move we award a contract in the amount of $178,088.50 to Sheehy Ford for purchases of five Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. That takes us to Agenda Item Number 11, an update on naming bridges in honor of fallen police officers. Brandon Martin is going to lead the discussion on this. Brandon, welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the board. As you may recall, a few months ago, you directed staff to look into the process for renaming bridges in Henry County after police officers, law enforcement officers that died in the line of duty. Following that meeting, we contacted Lisa Hughes with VDOT to see what their process would look like, and then following that guidance that we received from her, we went on to do some research of the background of some of the officers and to find out where they lived, which communities they belong from, things of that nature. So at the end of that research, we emerged with a list of seven officers that qualified, and these were residents of Henry County or those who worked for a law enforcement agency in Henry County. The names of those individuals are George Melvin Brown, George S. Frame, John Hughes Mitchell, John J. Johnson, Paul Edward Grubb, Willis Herman Ferguson, and J. Michael Phillippe. So once we narrowed down the list, I began to take up a meeting with the sheriff's office to give recommendations on places that they believe would be suitable for a memorial. And in deciding which bridges to choose, we kind of narrowed it down based off of either a direct recommendation from a surviving family member or places that were close to these officers' lives. So to that end, we've identified bridges that are appropriate for five of the seven officers at this point. Recently, we received information that we had people in this community that we could reach out to for the other two that may have a better idea of where they would like these bridges to go for these officers and their family. So once we've done our due diligence on that front, we'll be coming back to you with resolutions to name those bridges. And after that, the resolutions, should you choose to approve them, they'll go on to the Commonwealth Transportation Board for filing. You have any questions?
Should any board member desire to add additional input, they just need to contact you, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update on that. Agenda item number 12 is informational items. We will begin by taking any comments from the board, starting with Mr. Zaire.
No, sir.
Mr. Gillip.
No, sir.
Mr. Bryant.
No, sir.
Ms. Buchanan.
No, sir.
Mr. Slaughter.
No, sir.
And I have none. Mr. Hall.
Just a couple, to remind you that your planning session is scheduled for February the 8th at the New Adult Potentia Facility, beginning at 3 o'clock. Start for the tour of the facility, and then what we'll do, unless you want to do something differently, we'll do what we usually do, staff will present a recap of the highlights of the past fiscal year and some of the challenges that are coming in the next, and hopefully we'll have a pretty flowing discussion on how to get through the next 12 months. Make sure you have that on your schedule, 3 o'clock at the New Adult Facility on Dupont Road. So we'll start by 3 o'clock.
We're going to start at the jail.
Yes, ma'am. The whole thing's going to be at the jail. For the tour, then we'll do the whole work session at the jail.
Okay.
We have started our budget work internally. The team that does a lot of this work, myself, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Jones, and Stanfield, we have had to begin some cursory examinations of revenue, possible revenue, possible hurdles that we'll have to trip. So we have begun that. Our departments have to have their budget requests in to us by February the 11th, and we, I reiterated to them this morning at our staff meeting, in the past, we've always asked you to ask us for what you need, not necessarily what you want. And our guys have done a tremendous job of that over the years. We'll tell you that this, we tell you every year that the budget is going to be difficult. This is about to the power of 10. This next budget is going to be that hard, so there'll be a lot of work that has to go into that. Now, I want to just reiterate one thing that Mr. Keith said, I don't want it to get lost. In fact, I would like to see it get some more attention. According to the unemployment rate from the state, November 21, November 20, 2021 number, most people working in Henry County since 2008. That is a monumental achievement, given all that's gone on with the pandemic and people leaving jobs and changing, and the whole effort to get people engaged and get them to work. On November 21, that's the most people we've had for over 13 years in the workforce, which I think is a huge accomplishment. The board supervisors, Mr. Keith and his staff, I think that's the number that needs to get trumpeted, so I want to take just a few seconds to get it back out. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Hall?
No, sir.
Okay. With that, that takes us to Agenda Item Number 13. If someone will cite in the form of a motion, the items that allow us to go into closed meeting as allowed by the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in a closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.23711a1 for discussion of appointees to the Industrial Development Authority and Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program Board. 2.23711a7 for discussion of pending legal matters. 2.23711a3 for discussion of acquisition disposable real estate. 2.23711a5 for the discussion of as yet unannounced industries.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. See you all upstairs in five minutes. A closed meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan, second by Mr. Slaughter. Mr. Wagner, will you poll the board, please?
He's certifying a closed session, discuss all public skills, matters lawfully exempted candidates identified in the motion. Mr. Zaire.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gillip.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan. Yes, sir.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adams.
Yes, sir. I believe the board has no business coming out of a closed meeting. We will stand in recess until our 6:00 meeting. I'll call the 6:00 PM session of the January 25th, 2022 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess from earlier today. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item, Matters Presented by the Public, that will take up as Agenda Item Number 19 tonight. Again, I welcome everyone. Specifically, I'd like to recognize members of our volunteer organizations here tonight that work hard each and every day to make sure that we're in a safe environment in our community. We have Agenda Item 14, General Highway Matters. Lisa Hughes from VDOT is here. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. Well, last week was a pretty rough week for VDOT, and I'm sure it was for everybody that had to get out on the roads, but all said and done, with the weather we had, the temperatures we had, I think we did a pretty darn good job of getting the roads cleaned up, and thanks to our first responders as well. I know they were right there with us, so hopefully no more snow this weekend or forever, as far as I'm concerned.
Forever.
I think I did it for all of us, but anyway, I just wanted to mention that. The only other thing I have is the safety project on 220 South that I spoke to you all about a few months ago. Those bids came in, actually, they came in lower than our engineer's estimate, and it's going to be recommended for award to the Commonwealth Transportation Board, and those, that project is for three lanes of, three miles of safety improvements on the southbound lane to 220, widening shoulders, adding rumble strips, and bar grill upgrades. So that project, you ought to see action on it later in the spring, early summer. And that's all I had.
Senator, want to have anything from Ms. Hughes?
Yes, I want to give her one comment. Thank you very much to you or whoever finally got that flashing caution light put up at the board lane.
Okay, yes. I bet we sure did.
I haven't been late for church since you put it up. I've sat over and looked at that red light so long, and nothing coming downhill, that I think it was a great time to get that in there.
I knew that would make you happy, and we've got a few more. We're going to do one at Dupont Road and anywhere we can, and do them safely. We're trying to get those in to get traffic going a little bit better.
Any other items? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 15 is Presentation of the 2021 Jack Dalton Community Service Award. Mr. Hall, will you give us some background on this, please?
Yes, sir. The board supervisors established the Jack Dalton Community Service Award in 2001. The award is presented annually to the Henry County resident who best exemplifies the standards of community service set by the leaders of Dalton. Nominations were received from members of the community, and the board was asked to rank all nominees in accordance to preference. This year's recipient is expected to be in attendance at the meeting. And also let me add that Ms. Lois Dalton, Jack's widow, is with us, as we are always happy to see Ms. Dalton venture out and meet with us, so it's an honor to have her.
Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you have this presentation for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir. This is a resolution by the Henry County Board of Supervisors. Whereas Mr. Jack Dalton served as a member of the Henry County Board of Supervisor, Supervisors for more than 24 years, and was serving as board chairman at the time of his death on May 24th, 2000. And whereas, the Jack Dalton Community Service Award, recognized as the highest honor and most prestigious award presented by this board, annually goes to the Henry County resident who best demonstrates the exemplary community service that marked Mr. Dalton's years of public service. And whereas, exemplary community service is best personified through the heroic acts and dedication of our local volunteer fire departments. And whereas, one such department, the Bassett Volunteer Fire Department, is led by a chief who not only serves selflessly, but enhances the public service of his peers through monthly training sessions that inspire the next generation of leaders to continuously think outside the box. And whereas, this chief dedicates numerous unpaid man-hours on top of his volunteer time to see to the upkeep of his department's facilities and equipment, saving countless dollars that are used on gear and supplies to better serve the community. And whereas, this devotion to servant leadership is the realm of public safety that has earned this chief the admiration and respect of not only his crew, but the fire service community at large. Now therefore be it resolved on this 25th day of January 2022, that the Henry County Board of Supervisors presents the 2021, as it says here, the Jack Dalton Community Service Award to Fire Chief Charlie Junior Lynch Jr. Furthermore, the board recognizes the immense debt and gratitude that we owe to our volunteer firefighters for their heroic service and call to the attention of our citizens. Signed, Jim Adams, Chairperson, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. I'm going to ask Mr. Bryant and Mr. Slaughter if they will join Mrs. Dalton and Mr. Lynch up front. The rest of us, since this is a board award, we will be behind them, giving them a little bit of distance.
On behalf of the Hennery County Board of Supervisors, and thanks to all your hard dedication to you, to me, the county sheriff's, and Fire Chief, and best volunteer fire officials, volunteer fire department. It was people like you that made me proud to be a citizen of the Hennery County, to be associated with volunteers like we have in our community here. This guy here is part of the Hennery County, and thanks to you for all that you've done to be a case in service to the Hennery County.
Mr. Slaughter, I think you have a little piece of hardware there.
Yes, Junior, the 2021 Jack Dalton Community Service Award is proudly presented to Charlie Junior Lynch Jr. in recognition of your distinguished service to the people of Henry County, January 25th, 2022.
Thank you.
Our next item of consideration tonight is Agenda Item Number 16, Award of Contract referencing turnout gear. It is six zero, Jennifer. Our next agenda item, we'll have agenda item seventeen and eighteen following each other. They're public hearings. Agenda item seventeen, a rezoning application, R dash twenty-two dash oh one, Vernice J. Crowe Junior. Mr. Lee Clark is with us from our planning and zoning area. Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located at the former four thirty-five Samble Heights in the Blackberry District. Taxent number is twenty-five nine forty-three A as lot B. The applicant here is requesting the rezoning of approximately half acre from suburban residential district to rural residential district, and the applicant wishes to allow for the placement of a single-eyed manufactured home. Following a public hearing, both the planning commission and staff both recommended approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this at six twelve P M. Is there anyone wishing to speak in regard to this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six twelve. This is actually in my district. I can't make the motion, but I do support the recommendation of the staff that we allow this rezoning, if someone will make that motion on my behalf.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Our next agenda item, we'll have agenda item seventeen and eighteen following each other. They're public hearings. Agenda item seventeen, a rezoning application, R dash twenty-two dash oh two, Barry L. Nelson. Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located on the south side of Process Road, approximately two tenths of a mile east of River Road in the Horse Pasture District. Taxent number is twenty-eight four lot sixty-two. The applicant here is requesting the rezoning of approximately sixteen and three-quarter acres from industrial district I one to suburban residential district S R, and the applicant wishes to develop the property for single-family residential purposes. Following public hearing, both the planning commission and staff both recommended approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at six thirteen. Is there anyone desiring to speak? I see one hand. I have a brief policy statement to read that not only covers this public hearing, but will also follow when we have matters presented by the public tonight. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. If you care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name, your subject matter, and the district in which you live. By coming to the podium, you have agreed to exhibit respect for the board and its members. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please try to keep your presentations in no more than three minutes. I saw a gentleman's hand right here.
My name is Gary Carlwell. I live on Wiffy Terrace. First of all, I don't know if y'all have this map. Could I present this map?
We have that.
We do.
That's part of our background material.
The last, the last meeting when the planning commissioner, there was four other people on, and they, they were here, and they was all in favor of this, of this change. I live, it's three minutes, you say?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Could I give you some pictures of, have y'all seen the property, the improvements that Mr. Nelson has made? I have some pictures, you know, I didn't know I'd be limited.
If you will leave them with Mr. Hall.
But anyway, let me, let me just say that since you see the areas, see, I live adjacent, that's in my backyard, and, and I'm a, I'm an outdoor person, and I love to be outdoors. I have a deck, and I've taken, I got pictures here of sunsets, beautiful sunsets that I've taken from my deck, and looking out over the field, I look at the deers, there were five deers, and then I went on my way over here, birds flying, you can see the beautiful sunset. I'm a photographer, I'm an outside person, I have slept on my deck, and I go out there and read my Bible, and I have a whole backyard full of things that I go out there and sit. I've been there for, since two thousand and nine, and looking at a backyard where there's a paved parking lot, you know, Eastman is right there next to it. And if this thing gets, I don't fault Barry Nelson for wanting to sell it, but if this thing gets into industrial within, and you know, it opens up the door, but he's, he's done ten, I don't know how much, but a lot of loads of dirt for six months, and leveling it into drain fields, and I just support his request to, to build a housing development that would increase our property. I speak for those who were here last time, but nevertheless, you know, one thing, one main concern, because this is, this is my mantra, is, is if it was to get industrial, you know, and somebody was to buy, and you know, it'd be a paved parking lot, and that would increase the pollution factor to the river, because it would be piped into the river. Now, you know, I could, I could go along, I could give you my history on that, but because I love this county, I've kayaked down the Smith River so many times, and I can actually see from, from Eastman, there's a discharge from that company, from that plant, about every ten minutes, that you wouldn't want to break. It's up under, the pipe level is up under the water, and I've talked to Brian Williams up here, but you don't know what, but nevertheless, even if it's just runoff from a vehicle, and I just want to say one thing about, you know, where the, down next to Walmart, down in that valley, at the end of Dick and Willie Trail, you know, that's where the March was steel, iron steel, but now it's a junkyard. Did you know, walking to Dick and Willie, did you know there's a river, there's a creek that, I don't know if it's a Danus Creek, there's a creek, it goes right by there, and where all them, all them cars are stacked up, it runs into the river, I mean, you know, all that leakage will go right into that river. The same, I'm saying that, the same thing could happen here. I mean, if you've got a parking lot, that's going to, you know, you won't have the drains, and it'll go in the river. So I support one hundred percent to get this change to residential.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board on this public hearing? Seeing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six eighteen. Ms. Buchanan, I believe this is in your district?
It is, and it's good to see that, you know, people are interested in creating single-family homes. We certainly need it in the area. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board support the rezoning.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number nineteen, matters presented by the public. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board on the matters presented by the public? I see one hand, I see two hands, I see three hands. Ms. Carter, I saw your hand first.
Thank you. I'm Dorothy Carter. I'm from the Reed Creek District, and on December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, Virginia's Attorney General Mark Herring ruled that the one percent tax, as it had been put into our budget, was being misused, because the one percent tax was not supposed to go toward former discussion, construction. Before this ruling, one-half of the revenues that were coming from the first year's one percent tax was approved to go toward Meadowview, which this board had already agreed to pay for in two thousand sixteen. So now that the Attorney General has made this ruling, I'm standing here before you tonight and asking for some accountability. As early as yesterday, as late as yesterday, I should say, I did some checking, and so far, the schools don't know if they're getting the other two point six million. And so I'm asking you to make it public, what you're going to do with the other two point six million for Henry County schools. There are desperate, there's a desperate need for many of our buildings to be repaired. This is something that will benefit our children, it benefits our staff. I know that the jail is coming in at a higher cost than what you had intended, but happens, happens in our personal budgets. But you know, if a car repair for me is more than I expected, I can't not pay the mortgage, got to do it, you know? And so somehow, I'm asking you to, to make this work, and not to take away from the school budget for next year, because it's still needed. In fact, you know, teachers are still about three steps behind, is my understanding. You'll have to match the five percent proposed budget, but I'm asking you to do all of that. Right now, teachers are walking out the door. We can't afford that in any school system. So I'm just asking that you will make this two point six million right, continue to do what's right for Henry County schools, because that's what's good for our children, that's what's good for our community, that's what's going to bring good business into this area.
Mr. Gravely, I saw your hand next.
I tell you, you hear me through the mask, huh? Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members. My name is Ben Gravely, and I live in the best district in Henry County.
I didn't know you was in Congress, right?
No, represent that, I understand.
Oh, I thought you'd moved to Blackberry District.
I just want to speak on your update concerning the naming of the bridges for fallen officers. While I find that very formidable, I have several questions that I'd like for you to consider as you move forward, and I guess my first question would be, is any consideration given to any other fallen service member? Meaning, for an example, and I'll just be upfront, I had a young man, one of my former students, got killed in Iraq, and so that's why I asked the question, is any consideration given to other fallen service members of our community? And if so, I would love to see something done in his honor, as far as, you know, the naming of a bridge, and I've already identified one down by Laurel Park, you know? And that was my next question, how do you choose these bridges to be recognized for fallen officers? And I guess finally, my question would be, is there, and you know, I pose these questions because I'm not sure your process, how, what criteria you use, but is there a time limit involved in this, you know? I don't know if you're going back, you know, ten years, twenty years, thirty years, how do you determine that? So in essence, I guess what I'm asking, what is the criteria for this process, and if, if consideration would be given to other fallen members, in this case, a fallen soldier got killed in Iraq, serving his country, the ultimate sacrifice? Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Gravely. Mr. Norman, I saw your hand.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Todd Norman. I live in the Blackberry District, and I'm the Fire Chief for the Fieldale Fire Department, and I just want to step up and say, first of all, thank you to all the members of the board supervisors, all the members of administration for Henry County, Public Safety Director Matt Tatum. This time, all you gentlemen, give these folks a round of applause for helping us out on this well-needed equipment, and we sure appreciate the funding, and we thank you very much for this committee.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Norman. Are there others wishing to address the board under matters presented by the public? Yes, sir.
I'll take it about anybody who can address the board, I guess, if they live in Henry County or wherever. Yeah, I've got a few things on me. My name is Ira Waller. I'm pastor of Jesus States Baptist Church, but I live on Riverside Drive, thirty-one, thirty-two Riverside Drive, and I was wondering if there's something could be done about, for instance, the house right across the road where I live. Been vacant for quite a few years. It's just a harbor for rats and stuff running in and out, cats running and stuff back and forth across there. The house is falling down, the gutters is coming down, the porch is just being propped up, and it's just a disaster. Not only is it ugly, and it's got a bad influence on Henry County, it's just a filth, and I believe it's a health hazard too. That and a lot of other buildings, like the old grocery store down there on Riverside Drive, it used to be, animals harboring in there, cats flying up everywhere, a bunch of cats sometimes, often with some are dead out there on the highway where they get run over, and I'd love to see something done about that. It's an eyesore, and it's a pitiful thing to look at. It's a health hazard, a fire hazard, drug hazards for people running in and out and making drug deals, and I'd love to see something done about it, tear my buildings down, do something with them. They're no good. They're ugly. It's a bad influence on Henry County. People coming in, seeing stuff like that, maybe somebody would like to see a business started there. Then you come by and you look at a, that's an area such as this, and they have different options, different thoughts about it. So you don't want to go to a place that looks like trash and try to do something in there. And I'd love to see something done about that. I see it every summer, animals killed, running back and forth across those houses, underneath the houses. I put out a bunch of rat poison where my neighbor passed away here a few months ago. Rats like to try to get me infested over at our house. So I put out a lot of rat poison to work, get rid of them, and try to combat them myself. And I have mentioned a few other people in Henry County about it, and some of them, it comes to these meetings, and I don't know where any of them's ever brought it up enough, but anyway, I'd like to address it, and I surely would appreciate if something could be done there, and I'm sure that everybody else in Henry County would love to see it cleaned up, something done. Up on Blackberry, next to Blackberry Predator Park, filthy store there, was over in Bassett, people dragging all kind of trash out, trying to set up flea markets, leaving it laying our rain on, moldy, filthy, stinking, and it's just lays there, and there's no sense in it. And people often try to sell it, just get a few dollars to buy some drugs or something with, and people seem like they back it, they condone it, I don't condone it, and I think it needs to be done, something about it. Thank you so much, board, for listening.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the board tonight on the matters presented by the public? Seeing no indication as such, Mr. Hall, do you have any other items for the board's consideration? Board members, do you have any?
Just one thing. I just want to thank the volunteers, period, for your patience, per se, in all this matter that we've had, especially with the air pack issue that you had earlier that you expressed here in our meeting. You know, we as supervisors, you know, we seek the best for our citizens and our volunteers, and we thank you for your support.
Any other items? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved. Have a motion, a second. All in favor? It is six zero. Everyone, have a good evening.